The regular meeting of the common council for January 5th, 2008. If you'll all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
Thank you. We have Police Chief Jensen here tonight to swear in a new officer. Come on up Marty.
Yes sir. Officer Hillary Lundberg, come forward please.
He's gonna help pin on the badge.
I, Hillary Ann Lundberg, having been appointed as patrol officer for the city of Hudson Police Department, swear that I will support-
Mom, put the badge on.
Swear that I will support-
-the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin-
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will willfully and faithfully and impartially-
I will willfully, start again Judge please.
I will faithfully and impartially-
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office-
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hillary comes to us from Austin, Texas PD where she was a seven-year veteran. She graduated from Hudson High School in 1993 so we're continuing to bring Hudson finest up from the Hudson School District. In fact, I think we have out of our 23 sworn officers, we have 11 currently that are Hudson natives or from the area. So, we welcome her to the department. Here I go.
All right Nancy, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Knudsen?
Here.
District one Morissette, District two Brokaw, District three Bernard, District four Wyland, District five O'Malley, District six Burchill.
Thank you. At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present if anyone present would like to address the council about any matter not listed on the council meeting agenda for tonight on any issue that has an impact on the city of Hudson and the common council may address in future. This is your chance, come on up and be heard. Anyone like to address the council tonight? First item then on our agenda is the consent agenda items. Will you please read those?
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of December 15th, 2008, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $484,989.21. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of an amusement device operator's license and amusement device permits to Gary Anderson doing business as Twin States Music Incorporated, 1811 O'Keefe Road, Hudson, for the period January 6th, 2009 through June 30th, 2009. To approve write-offs of outstanding checks in the total amount of $330.08 as submitted. That is all.
Thank you.
Move for approval?
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Roll call vote?
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Brokaw.
Those items are approved. Next item is applications for operators licenses. The finance committee recommends approval of the application on your issue sheet.
Mr. Mayor, recuse myself.
Mr. Morissette is recused from this item. The operators licenses for Elizabeth Ann Weincom for the period January 6th, 2009 to June 30th, 2010, I recommend approval.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Chief.
Hey, everybody's okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the license is approved. Next item is the application of Northfield Restaurant Corporation for a Class B beer license doing business as Pizza Hut 1550, Crestview Drive, Hudson, for the period January 8th to June 30th of 2009. Reason for the new license is that there will be new ownership and new management there. The idea is that the approval would be contingent on the surrender of the current license held by Ward Management of Hudson Limited. The closing is taking place on Thursday next week and the finance committee recommended approval with that contingency.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And the license is approved with that contingency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Hudson. Next item is number seven, update on contract negotiations for the police school liaison officer. Chief Jensen is here to discuss this with you as well as treasurer and finance officer Betty Caruso. There have been some negotiations ongoing. The past contract we've had for the past few years has been that there would be a 50-50 split for the school year and then the city would pay 100% of this position during the non-school year part.
That is correct.
And with the provision that overtime would be paid for by the school if it was for a school function. What we've been looking at and talking with them about is that most cities have a different split than that and it ranges from 50-50, straight 50-50 year-round to there are several, many around Wisconsin where the school districts pay 100%, 80%, 75%. There are a lot of different, but you'd be hard to find too many that are lower than us. The finance committee recommendation, Betty you might have to help me on this if I get it right, get it right, is that we have the city attorney look at the contract because she saw it for the first time now and so we're gonna make sure that it becomes a more of a contract that's been reviewed. And then that we would have this position paid for on an actual prorated basis for the time spent that the officer already keeps a log of duty hours. Or 100% for the nine months of the school year paid for by the school and 100% of the other three months paid for by the city which is in effect a 75-25 split. Did I state it right?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'll open this up to discussion. Why don't we hear a little brief background from Chief Jensen? You guys can ask him questions.
Like as I said, the contract expired on December 31st so we're currently working on negotiations with the Hudson School District. Nancy Sweet, in fact, they're having meetings as we speak right now in regards to the same topic. So there, we're looking at it as well. Proposal that they're looking at right now is the 50-50 split for the entire year. The school district would pay 50%, we would pay 50% and it would contingently go as it is right now. During the school year, Officer Crimmins would be in the school, working as a school liaison officer, doing his function there both as a police officer and as a liaison for the school district. And then in the summer months, when school is no longer in session, he would be working for the Hudson Police Department either in a patrol capacity or where we've used him in the last several years, doing investigations during the summer months. So as of right now, I brought this forward when I met with Lori in regards to where we were sitting at in negotiations just to try to get some kind of feeling of where the finance committee wanted to go with this. So, I think the school district is looking more, like I said before, a 50-50 split where the entire cost is covered, but the finance committee is obviously looking for a little bit more money being brought forward.
Marty, could you give us an idea of, or an estimate I guess, of how often Officer Crimmins may be pulled away from the school to do city police business? Is it rare?
It's very, it is, it's very rare that we pull him out of the schools. It would be if for some reason we are very, very short on patrol due to injuries or illness, vacations. We've had to pull him out and put him on the road. The last time I remember pulling him out was back in February 2002 when we had the homicides. We had to pull him out of the school for a few days to go on patrol, but otherwise he does, the majority of his work is in the school.
Okay, good, thank you.
And that's where I think maybe the hourly compensation from the school district might come in, might work out nicely. Is if there are situations that the officer was needed by the city, the school wouldn't be paying for those hours. We just, the city's been carrying far too much of the cost of this officer and I understand the need for him up there, but the school district needs to decide how much they want to pay and then there's a certain number of hours that'll be commensurate with that pay. It's fairly simple, I think, and fairly logical.
Well, it seems to me Lori, and pardon me if I am repeating anything that you might have gone over in finance because I wasn't here for that meeting, but even when the school district is paying him, the citizens of Hudson which make up 41% of the school district are paying 41% of that.
Right.
So to pay him for half for us and half for the school district means we're actually paying 41% of the remaining 50% and we're being kind of double taxed. I'm not trying to come down hard on the school district, but the people who utilize this officer should pay for it.
And even at a 50-50 split for the year, simplistically, they would be paying for six months and getting them for nine. We would be paying for six months and getting them for three. It's still inequitable, so.
Well, I understand we're not going to do anything pending council review.
Can the contract updated?
This is an-
Proposal actually or something?
It's an ongoing negotiation, it's been going on. I mean, they first approached me back in the summer as they put their budget for this year together on their, there was strong interest in a second police school liaison officer with their desire to have that, one based at the high school, one based at the middle school. Part of my response to that was to say that, you know, I could support that, but that I thought that we needed to really reevaluate the split because they seemed to want this a lot more than we wanted it. In other words, when I looked at it in our budget where we end up paying, you know, the vast majority of it and we really aren't getting a lot of extra, you know, I'm all for putting extra officers on the street, we did that in 2008 and if I thought we could do that again in 2009 and afford it, we'd do it again in 2009. But the point was, we're paying to do something that, you know, it didn't look as much a priority to the city as it was to the school district and really it came down to how it was being paid for. What the finance proposal here is that who gets the use of the officer pays for the officer and that seems a lot fairer and under that basis, if they still want a second officer next year, I believe that the city probably be all on board with that. And we ultimately removed it from our budget this year after they had already budgeted for a second officer.
But at these rates.
When they first, well, I shouldn't say that, their preliminary budget had a second officer. At the end before approval, it was pulled because we weren't gonna be able to go along with it, we just couldn't fit it in our budget. So that's kind of some background for you Scott, but I think what you're saying is correct.
Does Catherine, Catherine, do you want us to give you direction? Do you, would you like a motion now before you work on the contract?
Finance made a recommendation and then we need council to-
I will move that we accept Finance's recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the finance committee as a new negotiating guidance for negotiating. We'll prepare a contract as such and forward it on to the, to the school district and hope that they sign it.
Just one concern or guarantee is making sure that we still retain however you want to word it, that we have the right to pull him out when our need arises.
See, that's why the contract needs to be-
Yeah, and I haven't seen that, so, but I'd like to make sure we see that.
Okay. Just so that the council understands, he's not in there just not doing schoolwork, he's doing a lot of police work in there. Between the fall of '09 and the end of this December, he's written over 498 citations in the schools. 245 tickets issued for ordinance violations, 139 tickets for truancy alone, not including 245. He's written a total of 306 crimes that were charged among 200 students there that were under the age of 16. So he's doing a lot of police work at the school. So if we end up pulling him out and if we, if we charge prorate like for how much work is being done up there, I think the school's gonna end up with a better deal than we are because he's gonna be able to show that he's doing investigations, he's writing tickets, he's doing a lot of other stuff and that he's not doing as much police work up there because before we had that position up there, our officers were being called up there two or three times on a daily basis.
Well, when, during the school, I'm trying to understand what you just said. During the school year, when his duty hours start in a particular day, he reports where?
He reports to the school.
To the school. And when his duty day is done, he leaves the school.
Correct, he comes down-
During that whole time, those hours would have been billed to the school district. I don't care if he's writing citations while he's there or not. That was the intention of the finance committee, correct?
Right.
Is that how you saw it Scott?
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm clear in that when I bring it to the school because their argument's gonna be, he spends a lot of time doing police work there, are we gonna get paid for him doing police work? And my big thing is whatever, whatever the money is, is not my big concern, my concern is not losing this position.
Where is the need being created? It's being created in the school and they want it dealt with. I don't think anyone's questioning whether they need an officer there, it's, they, it's an employee who they need to pay for. It's no different than a counselor or a teacher or an administrator.
But if, if they're not paying for it and they decide not to pay for it, I can guarantee you we're gonna be called up there on a regular basis.
But I can guarantee you we won't have an officer talking to the literature classes.
Well, they'll ask us to, they'll ask us for, have officers come in there and do it.
We can bill them for it.
Marty, if I may interject, we already have a concept in our code to deal with such a thing. If officers are called repeatedly to the same location, the people who own that location wind up paying for the officers. We already have that on the books, I know because I wrote it. And if the school thinks that they're gonna just do an end run by saying, "No, we're not gonna pay for your officer, but we're gonna keep calling your officers up here a couple of times a day," well, we have an ordinance that says you're gonna pay for that officer. So I think they need to, and I'm not saying they have that notion, but if they do have that notion, they need to be disabused immediately.
I guess being concerned with that is the same thing as, we get called up to Fleet Farm quite often for, for shoplifting. Am I gonna charge them for having a new, you know what I'm saying? If they call us up there because they have alcohol on the school property or marijuana, tobacco, or they have a truancy issue, I can't bill them for that, that's a law enforcement function that we've gotta come forward with.
Unless it's a chronic nuisance.
Well, okay, let's, let's not go there, we're far afield. We're far afield.
So we have a motion.
You know, we've got a motion and a second to, to go forward with the recommendation from the finance committee. Any further discussion?
Lee.
Pam? Go ahead.
So this means that, I mean, it's not up to the school district to say they'll pay 50-50. Whatever we decide here and gets written into the contract is what gets put forward.
Here's the thing, I'm a supporter of the police school liaison position. Chief Jensen is a supporter of the police school liaison position. The school district likes it so much, they wanna double the number of hours, that's what they budgeted for initially this year, that's what they asked us for. They're clearly supporters of it. We've got a lot of common ground. We asked for a tweaking of the pay and it didn't happen, or of the, of the, how the portionment of the cost of the position were done and so we're still negotiating it. And, you know, this is the first time that I've officially brought it to you for public discussion. You probably all read the article that came out in the paper that the district, well, there was an interview done by, by the paper on this as the district began the, a public education process to let people know how much they valued the position and they do value the position and it was clear from that article why they do. And, and it's something for us to continue. You don't want to lose it, I don't want to lose it, but there's really no reason why we should. If we're simply having the cost be shared equitably, I don't think that's anything anyone can argue with.
And I think that when you get down to the numbers, the fact that when you split it a certain way, a certain group of people are being double taxed, in this way, everybody's taxed the same way for the same position makes a lot of sense financially. I think that's where the base of the argument is, that either the school district can raise funds or the city can raise funds to pay for the position and in this case, we're saying the school district's base of people that are supported raise the funds to support the position. I think that's the only thing we're arguing is getting rid of the double taxation, that the position is a valuable position.
Ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is number eight, review water utility director job description, proposed salary range, and recruitment hiring process. This was discussed at the finance committee and we have some recommendations. The actual hiring is in the control of the Public Utility Commission, in other words, the, the deciding who to hire. But what the finance committee suggested is that we should follow, I recommend to them that, that chapter three of our employee handbook be followed. Chapter three is titled Recruitment, Selection, and Appointment. It goes through procedure for filling positions that includes, number one, updating the job description, number two, post the position as required for union positions, number three, at minimum advertise a position one time in the Star Observer and on the city website, number four, whatever committee is responsible for hiring should narrow the applicants down to an acceptable number to interview, number five, interview and select, select a person and we felt that should be followed. Part of that is review and updating the job description. We had a recommendation on the job description which was in your packet. If you go down to the third main bold section, it's special qualifications required or desired and there's a list of those qualifications, we suggested that that should be reworked to list the qualifications required as one group and then qualifications desired as a second group. As it reads right now, all of these are, could be construed to be merely desired which essentially means there are no qualifications for this position. And then the specific thing of certification by the State of Wisconsin as a waterworks operator, what's called a GDI certification, and continuing education to comply with the DNR rules that we would like to recommend to the commission that that become a qualification required for this position. And in regard to the salary, the current range, salary range for our other department head director positions runs from $63,000 to $75,000 a year plus the benefits and that we'd like to suggest to the Utility Commission that that sort of range ought to be their guideline as well. Were there any other parts of that that I'm forgetting? Is that it? With that, any discussions or questions about that?
Okay, did you mention the-
Yes.
Was there any discussion in finance about, because we've had this discussion in previous years about changing requirement from a high school diploma to a college degree. And the reason I bring that up is that water utilities have become pretty sophisticated, while you got in your packet this week, a list of, a partial list of current literature on water utilities and it seems to me that this is something that we might want to consider at this time, looking for a college degree instead of just a high school education. I don't know if you discussed it or not.
One of the things we did discuss and I'll ask our city attorney Catherine Monketrick to give the full council a brief summary of the interaction between the common council and the Public Utility Commission Board and the utility itself, if you'd do that please.
The city has decided, I mean, previously to operate the utility with a commission. By statute, the commission has the authority to hire a manager, set its compensation, hire subordinates that are necessary, set their compensation. The council exercises general supervisory control. The commission is really responsible for the day-to-day and the management of the utility. So while the council can make recommendations to the commission on qualifications and so forth, those are recommendations, the council does not decide these matters. It's up to the commission to decide who they want to hire for a manager. But within the general supervisory control, council can make recommendations on qualifications.
Well, council has had a strong voice in that in the past.
Correct.
I'm not saying that we dictate terms now.
Yeah, no, it has been cooperative, it looks like in the past, that they have come to finance, they have run the job description through finance. I don't know that the statute requires it, but they have done that. So to the extent you communicate together and say, "This is what we recommend and why" and so forth, I think that's a good process. I just, the authority of the council is limited in terms of the actual hiring.
But we could make a recommendation.
Sure.
And that's what I'm suggesting, given the current level of sophistication in modern day water utility management, that that may, they should consider that as a desirable, that we understand that to be a desirable thing.
I think that might be a valid addition to that list that I made of suggestions that we're making to them. We have this general control and supervision. There was further discussion in the finance committee meeting about are there any opportunities to combine departments possibly? Would this be a time to look at such a thing? The question Catherine had researched and, and told me and told us that as cities of the fourth class which we are currently and cities of the third class which we might be sometime in the relatively near future if we choose, if our fourth is the next census, cities of the third and fourth class having established a utility commission can abolish the commission at their choice, recombine, reconfigure it and form a new commission if they want to. For example, wastewater in some communities is also run as a, I mean, that's another revenue based thing that could be a utility commission. Question came up, could we combine the two of them? How come they're separate? In some places, it's water and sewer department, you know. We could bring it all in-house if we wanted to. It's been, it's been run as an independent, we essentially delegated day-to-day management to the commission years ago, early 80s.
Yeah, that's correct to a certain extent. If you go with a commission type of structure, you've gotta follow the statute and the statute sets up how many commissioners and what they can do. You can't make your own hybrid in terms of-
Correct.
-commission.
So with that, it will be up to the commission to do this hiring, but I think we can give them some guidance. So I'd be looking for a motion on that.
I also move that we give the guidelines we've just discussed.
The finance committee recommendations plus the addition that we make it a qualification to have a college, a bachelor's degree. Second? The language you want. Can we have a second? Any discussion?
Is there any real advantage to keeping the commission and abolishing it?
I think if you want to look at that, I mean, what's on the agenda is reviewing the job description and so forth and, I mean, that idea came up, but I think if you want to really discuss that, you need to put that on a separate meeting agenda.
Understood. I just wondered if this motion will supersede any- I just wondered if this motion will supersede any ability to work on that in the future.
No, right now, you've got a commission, and you're making recommendations to that commission. If you want to look into a different way to operate the utility, that's, that's the council's choice, but that has not been noticed for this meeting.
Any other discussion?
As long as we're talking about this position, if, if, if our goal is to try and save some money by combining two positions, maybe that's what you were getting at.
Well, it feels like we're getting this ball rolling.
Ahead of the game.
We're not going to be able to...
We're going to go hire somebody before we've really looked at the idea of, of combining the two departments.
And that's ours, I'm afraid we're sort of circumventing that discussion.
But if we decide to abolish the commission, then the whole organization is up to restructuring. So at that point, you change whatever people you have at that point, because you're really restructuring two departments completely. So it's a whole different discussion.
I'm not, I'm not sure abolishing that commission is the right direction to go. I think they'll strongly take your recommendation, and they've always worked real well with the council. There's been really no, I don't think I'm advocating...
Well, abolishing the commission is not on the agenda.
Right.
So we can't talk about it, okay? The idea of combining, the idea of combining would require that as a step. And if you want to talk about the idea of combining, we could notice that for another meeting and talk about that. And, you know, there was a time, for example, when wastewater was under Public Works, wasn't too long ago. Hank Paulson was the Public Works Director, and he, he was overseeing wastewater. And there was a time way back when, when water wasn't an independent commission. I mean, there, there are ways that it could be done differently. If you want to look at that, you can give me that guidance at the end of the meeting under items for future agendas. But right now, we have a motion and a second.
Well, let me, let me ask a question relative, and this does speak to the agenda item, Catherine. I'm safe here. But to Lori's question, and I'm ashamed to admit this, because I worked very closely with DC over the years, but I have no idea how long our water utility can go without a water utility director. Which, if you, I mean, because another option here tonight is to not change this and not move forward, and to advise the commission, please don't hire someone at this time while we rethink this. I don't know if that's a really good choice or not. I have no idea. Does anyone have an idea how long we can go without a water utility director?
I'll give you my opinion based on my research, and Devin can chime in, or maybe you want to speak first.
All right.
The, you know, we have Chief, Chief Operator Jim Frye, who's able to keep the day-to-day operations running very capably. The head of the utility commission is, the president is, actually has the authority to run the, the utility completely. I mean, the, the authority to run the, the operation is delegated to the manager by the president and by the commission.
It's Tim, right?
That's Tim right now, Tim Crusoe. And, you know, for example, they can write checks and spend money.
I would say the commission can...
The commission can, can, can run it and keep it running, and I have every confidence that they can keep it running. And, you know, they, they, they already noticed a meeting to fill this position and then canceled the meeting once. And it was partly because my input was, let's look at the process a little bit first. And so I asked them to give you a chance to chime in, and this is your chance. If you want to postpone doing that, it's entirely possible this position could be filled by them, which is their prerogative, without any input by you.
I think you can...
Their next meeting is the second Tuesday of the month.
No pressure there. Catherine, you were about to say?
Well, I mean, in term, they're going to just know that the city council may be looking at this whole thing. Right now, there is a utility commission who has the authority to hire. So I think Dean's correct in that if you have input, you should give it to them. And you may want to say, we may look at this, this whole operation, just point of information.
Can we do that in conjunction with each other?
I mean, it's just a point of information.
I think you can take action as described tonight, and go on further to a second step that we can talk about later at a future meeting.
And that doesn't, doesn't hand tie them from getting an operating person in there to operate the organization.
To be honest, there'd be some staff work to be done to answer the obvious questions that would come up in a meeting, talking about those other options, which you all will have questions that we don't know the answers to right now. So it wouldn't be efficient to discuss it further tonight anyway.
Any direction there could take up to six months to get resolved. And I think that it feels like they need somebody to direct that organization, and they have the authority to do it.
Well, if I read Catherine's mind correctly, which I don't often do, it would seem to me that I would need to amend my motion, because I don't think we can have a separate motion about the, the structure of the water utility. That is not on the agenda. So I will amend my motion to add to it, to give advice, to advise Water Utility, that the council members have expressed an opinion about reviewing, whether or not to keep it as a separate commission, combine it, or create some different structure. That's a long motion, and I'm sorry, but that's it.
Well, and we have a motion and a second under discussion already, so if you, if you're moving to amend it, we'll need a second on that. Is that what you want to do, or are you happy with the original motion?
I don't want to hand tie them. I'll second your motion, because I think that it's a good idea to review these things. But I also don't want to cause them not to move forward in, in the decisions they need to make. But I'll second your motion for a recommendation.
Well, we're just advising them. We're not, we can't demand anything here.
Can you read back the amendment?
To advise the Water Commission that the city council wants to consider changing the commission?
Structure.
Structure, okay.
All right. So let's, let's...
Review the structure to see if we want to change it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to review it.
I'm taking that as an amendment to the original motion. You can vote yes or no on that amendment. The amendment would be to look at changing the structure. I already heard from one member that they aren't in favor of that, I believe. So I think we're going to vote on that separately. So you can have discussion on the amendment right now, the amendment being to look at changing the structure of the commission and the utility. Any discussion on that?
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Okay. Others?
Well, I, I think it's an opportune time to try and save some money, to look at combining two departments together, possibly. Again, I don't know if it makes sense or not, but to look at it would only be prudent, in my opinion.
You're suggesting a look doesn't mean that there's a preconceived outcome.
Correct. That's, I think, that's what I got from Mr. O'Malley.
And that's what I agree with, yeah.
We don't have the answers. We want to investigate a little bit.
Other discussion?
That's the way I viewed it.
And that's the way I took that motion also, is to consider review, to review it and see, see where we go with it, not a decision that something's going to change.
Lori?
So that amendment is in addition to the previous recommendations about the recruiting process and changes to the...
To my initial motion.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
My sense is that we had unanimity on the original motion, but not on this part.
We'd like to point out that there is already a, a link between water utility and wastewater, and that is that wastewater, they're both separate taxing, fee structure entities, but...
Discussion.
Oh, okay, are we getting too far into it for you? We're making Catherine uncomfortable, never mind.
Ready to vote? All in favor on the amendment, say, did you have further discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Five to one. Morsset votes no. Any further discussion on the original proposal, which has now been amended to add the review of the structure? All in favor then on the amended motion to look at the job description, to follow chapter three of our employee manual, to recommend the salary range, to recommend the job qualifications changed as we discussed, and to look at the utility commission's structure. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
And we have five to one, and motion carries. Next item is what? Closed session?
Yep.
We've scheduled tonight closed session pursuant to chapter 19.851(c) and section 19.851(e) of Wisconsin statutes, to discuss the 2009, 2010 collective bargaining agreements with Hudson Police Patrol Officers Association and Hudson Police Sergeants Association, and the 2009 salary and benefit adjustments for nonrepresented personnel, and the internal promotion of a Public Works and Parks lead man position. We have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second? Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call vote, please.
Morsset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Churchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we'll convene into closed session. Sergeants Association and 2009 salary and benefit adjustments for nonrepresented personnel and internal promotion of Public Works, Parks lead man position.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the patrol unit and the sergeants' unit, as, as we see on our issue sheet.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All, discussion, please. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next part is the nonrepresented salary and benefit adjustments. My suggestion would be that we offer the HRA and the salary adjustments, or salary adjustment of 4% for 2009, and the HRA as we're giving the police officers.
And then 5% employee contribution to the premium for the health insurance.
5%.
So moved.
Motion is to accept that recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third item is the lead man position. Mr. O'Malley?
Move to recommend Chuck Prolock to fill the lead man position for the newly combined Public Works and Parks Department at a pay increase of 75 cents per hour.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That takes us to communications and recommendations from the mayor. We've had a lot of snowfall and icy roads, and our Public Works Department's done a good job in clearing the streets. We have used a lot of salt, and salt is expensive this year. We're making some budget adjustments to be able to continue to have clean streets and keep traffic flowing smoothly, and I think we've got a plan for doing that. I'm very confident that there will be no problems there.
Betty did, excuse me, Betty did provide information tonight on the budget we're wrapped with.
There's an update for you on your table. Last year in 2007, went considerably over budget on snow removal. For 2008, we actually came very close to coming in on budget. Percentage-wise, we're talking about a couple percent. So it's about as close as you could budget it. And we looked very closely at that item for 2009, used some very conservative numbers for fuel costs, and looked hard at the salt. And that's, that's just a quick update for you on that. Any items from any alderperson? City Attorney? City Administrator? Ready to adjourn?
Oops, do adjourn.
Motion, do adjourn.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.